I'll make a motion to adopt it.
I'm second.
I'll second.
Motion made in second.
Is that for the second agenda?
Yeah. Look in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We move on into old business. You have a public hearing on the withdrawal territory Lakeview Rural Fire Protection Program.
Um, Mayor, I need to interrupt you, but I didn't get public comment on the agenda. Could you guys please redo your vote on the agenda to put the correction of public comment? I apologize for that.
Okay, go back. Okay, public comment in between motion to adopt second agenda and old business.
A motion to approve it would be, that is a public comment.
Second.
Okay, now then, all right. All right, we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You will be well informed today. So, I'm Ginger Casco from, I'm the executive director of Lakeview Community Partnership. And we're here today to ask you folks permission, the town permission, to place some benches, trash receptacles, and planters, and what they call a parklet in the core downtown area. That's wonderful. And it was being funded through a grant through Travel Oregon. And we are applying for the grant. They gave us two weeks' notice, so that's why you're just hearing about it. And, um, maybe we want to just see.
Can I get one together?
And the grant is due tomorrow. So, we have a little conversation we need to do. These things are all, you know, to be helpful to, um, to all of you to understand what it is we do. We've got advisors, we've got some visuals, and, um, I will tell you all about here in just a second. I can't look at your fingers when I'm talking to you. It's so frustrating.
Is this mostly on E Street?
Yes, most of it is going to happen on E Street, and I'll explain why here in just a second. Okay, so I think we're all in. The rest of this is for you guys to just fill out here. Sure. Okay, so, I'm just going to read this, uh, because then I won't forget everything. So, um, first of all, like I said, this is a grant that we can apply for through Travel Oregon. And this is a partnership between the Lakeview Community Partnership. We're writing a grant, but we've been working with the, with the town manager, with Michelle, and with, um, Sheila at the Chamber, and several other business people over the last two weeks to get this put together. So, um, those are the, those are the three main entities and then some businesses. I'll talk a little bit about that as we go along. It's basically a downtown beautification project that focuses on enhancing public spaces. Now, in 1999, 2000, ODOT did a project to improve the streetscape on F Street. And at that time, all of the trash receptacles and the planters that you see that are on the, um, F Street, and a few up here on E Street, and some benches were placed as a result of that project. E Street didn't get any. And so, I think somehow they managed to get a few extras to kind of sprinkle around on E Street to make it kind of tie together, but it didn't really, um, go very far. So, this grant is really an attempt to increase, um, those amenities on E Street and also have, um, a few of them up the street, on Center Street, up by the pool. So that we'll have some, um, a tie-in where everything kind of matches. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of the focus of it. And the purpose of the grant from Travel, um, Oregon, it's a Oregon, it's a competitive grant, competing with everybody all over Oregon. And they're recovery grants, COVID recovery grants, to get more infrastructure for outside public places. And we have kind of a unique situation than they do over on the west side, although it's not, not so unique on the east side, is our community's older, and we don't really have any green space or any public spaces in our downtown area. So, we have to be really creative in how we develop those. And the reason why they're doing this is they want to get more people outside to, um, have meals or eat their lunch or whatever, and, you know, get people outside and get them moving around, um, in the downtown core. So, the project will provide planters, trash receptacles, and six-foot park benches. There'll be a couple of eight-footers to match the ODOT streetscape project on E Street, the corner of D and Center near the swimming pool, and continue on F Street to the MC Museum. Replacement benches and planters will be provided on F Street, and the same configuration of large planters and trash receptacles will be added to E Street, from the Eagles Lodge to Jerry's Restaurant and the Town Parking Lot. Additionally, more park benches will be placed strategically at locations such as Jerry's Restaurant, Indian Village, Downtown Cafe, and other strategic areas where people might gather. Replacement of benches at the County Courthouse, the Town Parking Lot, and other areas where benches have become unsafe and were removed because they were damaged. Currently on E Street, there are a few small planters that match the F Street, um, design scheme. They're located on the corners, and a few trash receptacles that match the ones that are on F Street. There's also a few whiskey barrel planters and some trash receptacles that do not match the ODOT project, and those would be replaced or removed. Our goal is to bring these amenities to our downtown, replace those that have been damaged, create a branded streetscape that is the same throughout the downtown core. There would be an additional 18 large planters, 10 trash receptacles, and 10, uh, well, actually, eight six-foot benches and two eight-foot benches. And the total, um, well, we'll get into the money part of it here in a minute. In addition, we propose to place a parklet, and you have copies of the parklet, um, pictures of it, which is a self-pending deck with railings and planter boxes in the parking area in front of Warner Valley Mercantile and Talltown Bike and Camp. The parklet concept has been around for some time in larger cities and now is showing up in small rural downtowns for several reasons. The most compelling is the lack of public spaces in our quaint western downtowns where green space and outdoor seating were not amenities of any value when our downtowns were built. As Lakeview has moved into a rural destination spotlight, our visitors as well as our local residents are keen to capture that public space amenity for takeout lunches, coffee and conversation, as well as meeting spots and the fresh air and during the time of COVID. Travel Oregon is looking for ways to support our small downtowns to help people be outdoors more and extend meeting spaces and outdoor eating areas. The parklet we're recommending for the project will accommodate up to five round tables with seating for approximately 12 to 14 people. Sturdy metal railings and planter boxes provide good distancing from cars on the street and parking adjacent to the parklet. The parklet itself is self-leveling and portable, so it can be stored in the winter months. The space required for our 20-foot parklet would take up 2.5 parking spaces with the balance offering a bike rack for bicyclists at Talltown and throughout the E Street area. The location would allow takeout from our four restaurants and coffee shop as well as providing a place for tourists and anyone downtown for shopping or business to relax and do business. We have downtown, um, the Downtown Cafe Bakery, and we've got, um, the Cycle Town Coffee Shop, Indian Village, Eagles Nest, and the Jerry's down the way. So, there's actually about five, um, businesses that could really benefit from it. The cost of the parklet with shipping is $17,200. Installation would be provided by the Town of Lakeview Public Works and Metal Cafe Tables and Chairs. The cost is $2,000. The cost of the planters, the benches, and the trash receptacles totals $26,645. And the total request for the project is $45,845. The grant allows for applications up to $50,000. There's no guarantee that we would get the full amount, and if we didn't, then we would have to adjust, um, for that. There is no requirement for matching funds. Flowers will be provided through the Lakeview High School Horticulture Program, as in the past, with a volunteer group that will be organized to provide ongoing care through the summer months. Uh, details are not fully vetted, but we are confident we'll be able to place the items and care for them. We will, we're, we're really excited to have the opportunity to tie this all together and bring E Street into better alignment with these amenities, um, to, you know, like what F Street had. We've got several documents here, and I know that we've got two people here in the audience that have some support letters and supportive documentation from businesses and other folks in the downtown area. The map that you have shows what, where the new amenities are going to be. We do have an inventory of everything that we have on F and E Street at this time. And we also have, um, a list of what things will be removed. And there may be some of the items that we already have, plus the new ones that may get moved around in different spaces because we noticed that there's some areas that kind of need some help and maybe where the, where the trash cans or the planters are really don't make sense. So, we're going to kind of do a redo on some of this downtown. Uh, the map was done and provided by Sheila Struble at the Chamber. And, um, Ann Logan has a list of, um, businesses that are supportive of the concept. And I was, would you like to read who we've got?
This list, I'm Ann Logan. This list is no way representative of all of the businesses. I didn't get to everyone. Some businesses opted not, I'll be honest. Some, I had two businesses opt not to sign the petition or the statement because they were concerned about downtown parking. But let me tell you who is in favor. Obviously, I am from the Red Barn Boutique. Christie Bernal, The Golden Gem. Jessica from Downtown Cafe and Bakery. First Community Credit Union. Backyard Floral. Country Home Floral. Gerald Bender from Bender's. Harland Furniture, Dan Harland. Razor's Edge, Stacy Albertson. And Painted Fringe Boutique, Tilly Flynn. And again, this does not represent everyone downtown. Time restraints, I just didn't get to all of them. But they were all very supportive and thought this was a great opportunity for downtown to shine again.
Thanks. And then Christie Bernal has a letter from, uh, Mike Beeson and, uh, Tom Batty from Talltown.
We have one here from Tom.
I don't believe you have this one.
Personalized even.
The right way, town council, town council, town council, and manager. Thank you. Well, thank you, thank you. Well, okay, I'll take it back. Thank you, thank you. And the letter says, "To Town Council, it's time to move ahead and start revitalizing downtown. That's always been Occupy E Street's goal. We've gotten a number of needed projects done through the years. On July 17th, the third Saturday, we will hold our 10th Annual Street Fair and Car Show. We want to make an impression on tourists as well as get the whole community to join in a day of fun. LCP's involvement is critical to this goal. They want to provide outdoor dining platforms called parklets, and this will allow folks not only to enjoy local shopping, but give them a place to dine, have a cool beverage, and just relax. Anything that contributes to our community's livability, we as a committee, Occupy E, are in favor of. Please join me in supporting LCP's forward thinking and support their efforts to beautify our town. Occupy E Street is grateful, and I urge the Town Council to approve this project. Thank you for your continuing support of quote-unquote Old Town Lakeview. Sincerely, Michael Beeson and me."
So, there's one other question that probably is on your mind, and that is, who is going to own the parklet? It is, uh, removable for winter. I mean, it absolutely would not make sense to have one hanging out there when we have our snowstorms and all that good stuff. So, um, it would be removed and stored, and, um, the other issue is liability. And we checked into, um, liability insurance policy for, you know, trip and fall, slip and fall. And with LCP's insurance, you know, we can probably cover it for around $300, $200 to $300. However, it probably needs to be owned by the town. And I know that, uh, Michelle was looking into what that would mean. We don't think that it is probably financially feasible, not feasible, but smart, to actually insure the structure itself, because I did check into that, and it was fairly expensive. It would be about $2,000 a year. And with the structure being, you know, it's, I think the structure itself was $15,700. It wouldn't take long before you, you know, if you put $2,000 in the bank, you'd probably be better off, but whatever. Anyway, so, those are things that I know would be on your mind and you would want to have some conversation about. So, um, I'm going to let it go at this point. If you've got any questions, I know that I would be happy to try and answer Michelle or anybody else here that's been involved.
So, you're just looking for our approval and then you're going to go forward with the grant?
Yeah, we have to have, yeah, we have to have a written statement by 5 o'clock tomorrow to turn in with our grant that, um, the town is approving this project. There are no permitting, it's my understanding from Janine and from Michelle that there is no permitting involved. It's just that we have to have your, um, permission to do it. Despite the fact that the sidewalks are owned by the, um, the building owners and all of that, the property owners, it's still, um, in, kind of in your purview, so.
Well, the other question I have, and, you know, I like the idea, actually, I really love it. But I don't know, who's going to water all the farmers?
Well, that...
That's a question because it takes some time away from...
So, we will have, we're hoping, we're still trying to work that out. We haven't had time to work that all out. But we do know that, um, that Horticulture Class is going to be willing to help. And we think we've got, um, 4H and Extension kids that will also help out. We think it's also a really good project for the seniors that have to have their community service. We're going to organize something. Unfortunately, we can't tell you that we've got it all together right now and who it's going to be and how, but that's definitely got to be a part of this because we are almost doubling the number of, um...
Well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, uh, because I think it's like 18 planters is what we're...
Normally, it takes, what, two hours, yep?
At least, at least an hour for keeping...
Yeah, we took that into consideration. We talked about it. There, there has to be some sort of a volunteer group and...
Yeah.
You talked with Jeff about that?
Pardon?
You talked with Jeff about it?
Yes, we did initially, and we talked with, um, Michelle about it. She let us know, you know, what, um, the, the money part of it was for them. And Jeff talked about the, um, what the time factor was.
And taking the trash cans and...
Right, right. When the streetscape originally went in, that was going to be the case too. It was going to be done through the Chamber with businesses in the area. It hasn't been that way. It's been us, you know, for the entire 20 years with the exception of, uh, work...
I would assume you guys would take care of the trash. Because that's going to happen, I would think. And then, how many of these are you going to put up? Like two?
One.
One in front of the bike shop?
It's a 120-foot parklet. That's all we're going to do.
And, and it goes out in the street?
It goes six feet into the street. It's 6'520.
I don't see where...
And Jeff's going to take it, put it up and down? Is it, is it, is it that he's going to do that?
I mean, I just want to, I want to be clear. I, I don't know where it would be stored either because it's a pretty big unit, you know? It's six feet wide and 20 feet long. If it's got to be indoor, it would...
We can't store it down at the, the new building, we have to...
It's pretty, it's pretty full right now. Everything is, we have for storage, it's pretty full.
It comes apart.
It does come apart.
Yeah, it won't be, you don't have to store it whole.
That's about the north side.
We're getting out of hand here. Yeah, we're going to have to figure this other thing out, but I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I need some consensus from the council.
I'm in favor.
Move forward with it.
I just worry about somebody hitting it in the car. I mean, uh, if that happens, we have insurance, I guess, right?
I don't think they'll stick out any car really. So, can you work up a letter? Okay, I'll sign it. You will? Anything else under public comment?
It would probably should be, maybe make a more formal motion because you are asking. You guys are authorizing them to apply for it rather than we have. And I think you're okay because this came up in a public comment thing. So, it would probably be better to go with a formal motion, authorizing the mayor to sign a statement of support for this. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, moving forward with applying for a grant.
Do you have a mayor writing a letter or Michelle?
Probably knocking on your doors. I know.
All right, uh, under old business?
Mr. Mayor, you need to actually ask them to vote. We do need to actually... Go first.
On public hearing withdrawal territory, Lakeview Rural Fire Protection Program. What, the, those are the, the ordinance? Somebody will read it by title only?
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, you do need to see if there's any commentary for the public hearing. Then you have to close it before you go to the ordinance board.
Public hearing, um, this is under old business?
It is, but you guys, remember, you tabled it the last time. So, you've got to reopen, you've got to keep that open and see if there's any comment. If there isn't any, then just open it and close it.
All right, so we'll open a public hearing withdrawal territory of Lakeview Rural Fire Protection Program. Do we have any public comments on that? Okay, hearing that, we'll close the public hearing. Ordinance 874 by title only? You have, you have 874, something?
Yep, I do.
One of you? You need that?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 874 for planning withdrawal of annexed property from Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. Health member deal, um, sorry, the mayor is asking first for a motion to read it by title only first. Then, if you approve that, then you read the title, then you approve it. Sorry about that. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Look in favor?
Aye.
Hold on.
So now, somebody needs to read it, and then you make a motion. No, you made the motion, so somebody needs to, the mayor needs to read the title of the ordinance.
I do?
Yep. Sorry about that, that's just the way we...
You know, you're really confusing us.
I know. It's the way, it's the way the charter's set up, unfortunately.
Well, an ordinance for planning withdrawal of annexed property from the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District.
And now, somebody can make a motion to approve the ordinance itself.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinances, red. Second.
Motion's made in second, look in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on down. The fee was the $400,000. $400,000, fire 911, one signature from the mayor. Need approval on that. For that loan, rebuild 911?
I'm asking for approval to move forward on the loan, and I have the mayor signing it, so I can submit, submit the loan.
Okay, I mean, it's moving forward with that loan for 911. Second.
Motion's made in second?
Thank you.
Look in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
All right, just, um, just remember, council, on April 16th, we have a work session on mapping. Don't want to forget that one. And also, on thinking of it, um, I believe April, we start our meetings at 6:00 PM.
If that's correct.
All right, let's move on down to new business. We've got a lot going on in new business, so... Who's in old?
Yes, sir.
The monthly art, craft, street fair?
Yes, sir. I think it was already happened, but... The monthly art and craft street fair is held on the first Friday of every month during the winter months, possibly April through October. The event would feature artisan crafts handmade by local vendors and ideally approved by local teachers and entertainment by local musicians. The object of this event would be to showcase local artisans as well as to increase traffic and awareness of Lakeview's downtown area. The event will be held on Northeast Street from 5:00 PM through 9:00 PM and would require Northeast Street to be closed between Center and North Second for approximately six hours, 4:00 PM through 9:00 PM.
Well, my question, I have a couple of questions on this. One, I don't know how you're going to get E Street cleared by 4:00 PM through 10:00, actually by 4:00 because people are still at work and they're parked up there. So, if you close off those streets, people are going to need to get their vehicles down there.
Right.
And do all the restaurants and businesses uptown are okay for this?
I have not addressed them, have I yet?
You need to address that for the fact is that you're taking away parking from businesses that are still open. Because I'm, I'm talking about Eagles Nest, uh, The Golden Gem, I think you're up till 5:00. Bike Camp is open. Hunker Mall, you've got businesses uptown that are still open until 5:00 o'clock. And so, you really can't close the streets off because then you're keeping people from coming to those businesses. And at that time of day...
Well, we keep people from parking in front of those businesses, not from coming to them.
Pardon?
To keep people from parking, but not from actually going to the business.
I, I'd like to hear from the businesses, just make sure that they're all okay with us just before we move forward with it. Just to see if they're, everybody's on board. Because we don't want to impact them.
All right, so, if, if it would be okay for me to speak additionally to this, this particular, um, project or the, the, um, first Friday event is sponsored by the Lakeview Community Partnership. This particular project or the first Friday event is sponsored by the Lakeview Community Partnership. And what we're trying to do is start this May seventh. And we haven't gotten down to all the businesses yet. The whole idea is to get everybody downtown, so that everybody will benefit. We'll have vendors, you know, on the street and all of that. But it's also for the downtown businesses to get people circulating and moving around and also with the restaurants and everything. So, so far, we haven't encountered any problems with it. We do need to get to everybody else that we haven't gotten to yet. But just so you know, that it's, you know, it's well, it's being very well thought out and Susan has really done a lot of research. And I think, how many vendors have you heard from that are interested in coming? We don't think all of them will come, but...
Forty.
Forty, yeah, she's already got forty that really are interested in participating.
I think it's a great idea, I just couldn't make sure.
Oh, sure. Just, yeah, just to give you a little more background.
Yeah, just so that you know, it hasn't been... I've been posting on local Facebook pages and there has not been any pushback about, from any of the businesses, about closing the street. Or, I mean, it's all been posted, it's to get people's opinions and whatnot. I have not so far gotten any pushback.
Would be better to have it by ten. These businesses, the streets were indecent last time, but it'd be cool.
Well, I mean, there's more than just the businesses. I mean, there's the courthouse, there's a bunch of people there. I mean, there's folks, you know, if it's after five, it would probably be better, just in that aspect, because it would, there's gonna be parking spots that would probably open up.
The courthouse would not be affected, I don't think.
Well, you don't know where everybody's parking.
Right, some of them are parking on East Street as well, walking across the street. Some, especially when you're around the courthouse, it's full. If the bug has a parkour reserved, going through the courthouse, the door.
So would it be better to have it started at six and close the street at five?
It probably wouldn't be about anything.
Okay. Would that make...
Because you still gotta set up all the booths and stuff with the vendors, correct?
I'm sorry?
All the booths have to be set up for the vendors and stuff?
Right.
So there's gonna be some lag time before it was started. So five would probably be better if we're shut down and then start at six.
Okay. So how would you like me to proceed from here?
I'm gonna check with all the businesses and see what their comments are. And then we have another, come back at the next council meeting and let us know.
And when is that?
Next Tuesday, six o'clock.
Okay. All right, so between now and Tuesday, I'll go to all the vendors and I'll go shop and get back to you next Tuesday.
I'll be on the line.
You're nice, all right?
No, no, it's...
No.
It's Sunday. The reason why I backed back is because we moved for spring break.
Oh, I'm on mark, I'm sorry. I wonder where you all are.
Tuesday the sixth.
Yeah, all right.
Tuesday the sixth.
And you only want to know about the businesses that are on East Street, is that correct?
Okay. So would the town be in charge of putting up blocks? Is that how that works or...
I don't know how it's worked and how does it work to occupy East Street. I'm sorry, I'm holding off the street here.
In the past, we don't actually do the blocking off. We just loan off all the cones and stuff and stockpile them on the corners and then...
Okay, yeah, we can do the rest. Okay.
Just wanna make sure we know who's doing what.
And also, they probably need to make sure they've reached out to the sheriff's department and all that, because we normally place it, close the streets and all of that. Normally, groups have reached out to that, that'd be kind of the blessing of those entities. Obviously, ODOT's not involved, but that's kind of the...
ODOT and the sheriff, right?
Mm-hmm.
But you don't need ODOT?
No, because they, yeah, it's just the sheriff on this one, because you're not on the main track as far as the state highway.
So I should be fed to the sheriff as well?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's been done in the past.
That's been best practice.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Move on down, opening of the public pool. Last day of school, June eleven.
So what date do y'all like to open the pool?
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Well, I'll get all the lifeguards in place and all the training done, so probably... Even the twelve for the nineteenth.
What have we done in the past as far as...
Well, I've only been here for one year. And we opened after the Fourth of July, because COVID. So this will be my first year of, like, the regular schedule. So whatever day you choose, find it, it's just gonna help me figure out when I'm gonna start.
Could you be everybody trained in time for it to start on the twelfth, or is that...
Yes, we can do that.
Really?
You have a pool or...
Well, we have several projects going on. I don't think the roof project is gonna affect the opening of the pool, because it's probably gonna end up being actually performed later in the year. The electrical panels will be done. We're actually gonna start on those the first week in April, second week in April, excuse me, not this week, but next week. I also put some estimates in there from a couple of roofing companies in your packet there. I think we, pretty obvious choice would be Henry's Roofing from Clamath Falls. So they don't have a definite start date on that, but they said they could come over and do a temporary, so we're not leaking onto our new electrical work that we're doing. If they couldn't do it until, you know, middle of summer or towards the, even in the early fall. Most of the leaking happens up there in the wintertime, but it's pretty, pretty obvious to them what needs to be done for a temporary fix until they can get the whole thing re-rubbed.
Is that part of the twenty-two-five?
That is not included in the twenty-two-five, but he said, you know, one guy could come over and look at a few hundred bucks.
Oh, okay.
The actual estimate for the kiddie park is a separate entity and it came out about fifty-five hundred, but that was with them doing quite a bit of structural rework. And my guys are actually working on that right now. So that little roof down there is gonna be around two thousand dollars, so. Between the two, you know, we're still, we're gonna be under twenty-five thousand for both roofs for the temporary repair and both roofs, so I think that comes out pretty good. The electrical work at the pool will be done in plenty of time. We also need to paint the pool. I mean, that's not a do or die situation. We got by with it last year exactly like it is right now. The big pool, yeah. So I'm thinking, if we don't have any major blowouts with our town stuff, then I think my guys can paint that. And so we'll just be out the cost of the paint there. We, we're lucky enough to get a donation last year that's gonna help out a lot in these repairs. We got about twenty-three thousand from the donations and we budgeted some for repairs also, so. Then the roof came in a bit less than we expected, so I think we'll be in pretty good shape. Even if we had to end up higher enough, I haven't looked at a contractor to paint the pool, but if we got bound up, we could probably have someone come in and paint it. But at this point, I'm planning on buying epoxy paint and having my guys paint it.
You might, might contact the rooper and tell them what our plans are to open the pool and see...
Yeah, I wanted to get you guys' blessing before I actually reached out to them. I mean, they're the obvious, apparent, low bidder. And the two products they're gonna be using are identical. They both have a really good track record, you know, they're... Henry's been in business for forty-plus years, so...
Yeah.
So would you make a motion to do that before we move forward?
You know, I don't even think it requires a motion. I think just a general consensus to move forward.
You've got my approval.
Yeah, I'm good with the wonderful little date with Henry's.
Okay. You want me to continue talking about my items and then we'll be done with me?
You will, can we, um, try to open the pool?
Right, right.
We're gonna open the pool.
I just need a date, because then I could start hiring lifeguards.
Let's do it, we can after school.
So the nineteenth?
Twelve.
Oh, okay.
Fourteenth to Monday, after, after Friday, but I don't know how the kids are gonna get training.
Oh, they will, they go in May.
So...
June twelve, open?
Nice for Friday.
Thank you.
Right.
June twelve is a Saturday.
Seven.
That'll, June twelve?
No, no, I'm kidding, I think so.
Okay.
I think we can be ready.
Okay, opening June twelve.
And then you guys can work on lifeguards and...
Yep, yep, we'll work backwards and you're all done.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff, go on, continue.
So, uh... We talked about the pool panel, the below deck work was gonna be around seventy-five hundred dollars. Most of that is for weatherproof panels, go in there and replace. I'll back up a little bit. Two and a half years ago, when we rebuilt the pool and when we got our final inspection, the inspector was not very impressed with the electrical system down there. And he wasn't even there to inspect that, but he gave us a pretty stern warning at that point. So it's taken us this long to get to a point where we can afford to replace those panels, so. Below deck is gonna be about seventy-five hundred dollars. We also had issues in the pool building, and those are gonna be about forty-five hundred. And everything is already on order for that. High Desert Electric is gonna do those two projects. And so we should be done in plenty of time with all that. We're gonna also be supplying labor for the electrician, the pole wire and whatnot, to cut costs on the, on the wiring project. I got ahold of Superior Fencing shifting gears to sewer projects. When we put in the hauled waste building down there, we had to tear out about a hundred and fifty feet of chain link fence. And so I've been calling the fence contractor from Clamath and finally Superior Fencing was in the neighborhood, came over and took pictures of the area and said they'll get back to me this coming week with a estimate to replace the fence down there. So that'll, that'll finish off that project. We've been working with ODOT. They had a couple of trucks on their fleet that they put out the surplus. And we bought equipment from them in the past, they got a real good deal. So they have two ten-yard dump trucks that both have plows for them. And they came up with a price, they're both nineteen ninety-seven models. Twelve thousand for one and eleven thousand for the other, five hundred dollars for the snow plows. So it's about twenty-three thousand five hundred for two trucks. And then we will in turn go, go to auction with two of our older trucks. I think we'll recoup about half of this cost through the auction of our, the trucks we're getting rid of. So I don't know if we really need a consensus or an ordinance on that, but that's...
Well, the high ticket item, I just wanted you guys to be aware, or if that, if we don't, you want, you don't want us to get two, we'll get one or...
Yeah, I really suggest we go ahead with both, because, I mean, the value of one of the trucks is more than the price of both of them with plows, so...
I went out there with Jeff and looked at those trucks, they're fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd be money ahead of course to get them. Because we've got the two dump trucks and a grader to get rid of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think...
And then the end of May, there's the auction and buys, they'll take all of our equipment. We've had really good luck selling stuff through them in the past, so. We won't be, you know, waiting long to get some money back out of the stuff we're surplusing, so. I think that's all I have on mine. Unless somebody has a question.
I don't know.
The two trucks, the two trucks we're getting rid of, one is a seventy-eight and one is an eighty-one, so...
Did you just buy that eighty-one last year or...
No, no, we bought a five-yard dump truck, that was it, yeah.
Okay, move on down, on accounts, auto pay. Michelle's asking consent from the town, the council to continue to pay these. Unto a financial, has been cleared through them?
And it was coped with me as long as our auditor was okay with it, because they deemed this in lack of internal controls last time. So as long as they give the blessing on it, I think it'd be clear, I just didn't want to make sure that any problems were, Michelle or... Patty, it's part of the...
I talked to the auditor about it.
Yep.
And so much has moved to auto pay and the controls connected to it, that whereas five years ago it was not allowed, now it's common practice. As long as we have permission to pass it.
Yeah.
I'm good with that, as long as the auditors are fine with that.
I think...
Thank you.
Okay. Move on down, we're working with binder, down, goals and objectives.
So we went over these, we created them when, during your training. The reason I want them included with the resolution is we are getting complaints about our water quality. And this will help everybody know that we're, we've got a timeline of what we're doing and how we're doing it. That we've got goals that are set to get our water up and running and clean. So that, once I have that, then I can send it to the senators and representatives and OSHA and all those people who are inquiring to say, we understand it, we're on top of it, it's our number one goal. And there's also some more other great stuff in here. So we just need to make sure that you're okay with those goals and objectives, I mean, we're working on them and then pass it to it. Everybody's clear about what we're up to this year.
You get a motion for that?
Yeah.
By the resolution, a resolution here.
Number one thousand eight?
Yeah. I need a motion.
I motion to move forward with the resolution one thousand eight.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made in second? Motion's made in second?
Aye.
Aye. Opening council roles and objectives to the town committee. Okay, thank you. So we have a community meeting on Brownsville. We're gonna look. And I've got, been going some deep, um, when I've been able to. But I'm gonna do it five thirds on the street parade at the... Mr. and sharing room. And I plan on going, the council, you're more than welcome. Next one, okay, Ed Henry came to me. And apparently people have been doing a lot of shooting and not cleaning up their shelves and stuff, not at the shooting range, but outside the shooting range. Like there, and I, you know, I talked to him, I told him I've been up there and I've cleaned some of their stuff up before. And we had this problem earlier, where people dumping trash down by the dams, put a gate in. Well, so far, that's worked pretty well, it's still there.
They're also shooting up towards the Nomi Vannenberg Trail sign, which is very interesting.
I guess, maybe put some signs up there that say no shooting in this area or something? I don't know if that'll help.
Mr. Mayor, if you remember, last time, I think what you guys did is you worked with the sheriff's department, get some game cameras up there, because with the trash issue, you couldn't seem to get, even with the gate, that did help deny access, but that was a constant kind of a problem. So you may want to, and then kind of let known, there's some stuff like that up there with your... So, you may want to, and then kind of let known that there's some stuff like that up there with urinal surveillance or something along those lines, just because of the-
Yeah, I was kinda going to talk to him tomorrow.
But that's kind of the, that, it's been kind of a constant problem. And the other issue is obviously if they start doing that in the fire season, they're not shooting in safe areas. The shooting range will shut itself down when it's a red flag issue, somebody else goes up there, whatever, against the useful facility because somebody, an idiot.
Yeah. And the next one, Jeff, this, I don't know, they're talking about that road just past the gun range where it's got that big dip in it?
Yeah.
Put a culvert there or something?
You know, a culvert won't really stay in there, it's washed out many times in the past. And so, I went up and looked at it this week. I think I'm just gonna put about three loads of three and a half inch minus, make the wet crossing less severe so that you can get through there and pretty much, if you can get through there in a minivan, you know, the rock is gonna wash back out. But it's really, you know, we haven't done anything with it for four or five years. So, that's the reason it's so, so steep and so abrupt on each side.
Right.
We'll, we'll put a couple loads in there, three loads probably and smooth it out.
Okay.
Make it, make it passable. But a culvert won't stay in that when we get a good runoff here, it just washes it out, so.
Right, because I know-
They actually had a 30-inch-
You guys have to go through it as well, to the springs.
Yeah, I, I went up there in the Ford Explorer and it didn't drag or anything, drove right through it. So, I don't know, they must be taking cars up there, but we'll, we'll make it less severe.
Trailers with trailer edges would make it there.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else before we close?
Is somebody gonna talk to the other?
Yeah. Yeah.
Did the council want signs posted, stuff like that? Anything along those lines or you go up to Sheriff's Department first to see what they're wanting or do you have proof?
I think we should talk to the sheriff and see if they wanna be-
I'll, I'll go talk to the sheriff.
That's probably your best bet, I think, just, because again, it comes down to, you have some stuff posted, if you can't enforce it, it's kind of, it's kind of a tiger.
Well, I think we've been very fortunate since they haven't destroyed that last meeting, you know, up there. Does anybody have anything, yes?
So, I was just going to add to the Brownfields project.
What?
The Brownfields project, I was just gonna add to information on the community meeting. It's basically an overview of the last three years of the project that's coming to an end, the end of September. But SCOED did go ahead and apply for a second grant that would start in October. And we should know by the end of April if, if we got it. And if we did, then that means that we'll have another three years and another $600,000 to do more assessments. And we're probably gonna be concentrating on downtown buildings and, and property owners that wanna participate. We've done several in the downtown area plus some out in the industrial park and it's worked out very, very well. And we probably have maybe three or four that'll be in the north end of the county that are old gas stations. But it's a very interesting project. I really encourage you, if you can, to, to be there because it really gives you a good idea of the kinds of things that the EPA and the DEQ can do to help us with revitalizing the properties that we do have that maybe need some help.
What's the date on that?
It's on the 8th.
Of April?
8th of April at 5:30 at the county, uh-
I think you should have, well-
It's a very last name.
And Ginger, there's a-
Ginger, does this, does this also include the Lakeview Lumber site too?
Yes, they, that site was one of the, there were properties that went through the phase one and phase two. Call Town Bank and Camp, the Altria Theater, the two old KBE buildings, the mortuary. I'm trying to think of all of the downtown ones. There were several really been helpful and they've all come out in good stead. They get what they call a letter of notification action by the DEQ or the DEQ. And that carries them through almost forever. It travels with the property owners, so it's not just the property owner that was available during the assessment. So, that property will forever be clear of any problems that would be related, any kind of environmental hazardous materials or petroleum products. So, it's very helpful.
You know, at one point you talked about the Lakeview Lumber site for the housing project?
Yeah, they're, the owners are now able to go on and begin the development of that property and that is on its way. And we don't know, you know, what that's gonna be, but that enabled them to move forward, so.
Ginger, do any of these, these are just assessment only grants, correct? None of this is actual cleanup at this point, or what this person said?
You know, it's, sometimes it depends. It sometimes depends on what it is because sometimes, an example is Don's Market. In order to do the phase two, the tanks will have to be removed and they're so close to the building that the building will have to be demolished in order to do it. So, it just depends. I mean, in that particular case, it's gonna get a clean sweep and-
Well, what I'm worried about that building is if there was any leak, how far it went.
Right. They haven't done that part yet.
They were able to do the remediation on all of it.
Okay, so let's sit down. Anybody have anything else? And we'll adjourn the meeting at 5:57.